Right.
He says the area.
Hey. I didn't know that.
Remember when he, you know, listen to the other video? It's what Sherman and Aron are doing. Works with town.
No, I didn't know that. Thanks for talking about what people want to say.
Keep editing it, obviously, and kind of start with things. It's all been a question of.
It's like a school.
Ten. It's been a challenge. We should just find a job. I don't know why. Please, if you can, if you have a job, sir.
Uh.
It has potential. Uh, absentee. Maybe they're going to.
Yeah. Can we go over the, uh, all the? You're away. No, I don't know. All we can mention, I guess, maybe. President of the U.S. Leo, maybe. Sure. Uh, my wish. They said we were on a bauer on that page. You said that.
Well, I see it.
No, you're not a strapping election, right?
No.
I'm all worried. The next year, I'm out there. Been a little bit of a.
We could sure be each pointed out.
Yeah. No, this table is worse.
I guess it was because the kids were in Stratford. Town, towns like towns in as far as Stratford.
Um, yeah, my daughter, both of them, two.
I mean, it's still.
She was scared.
Still piercing and important now.
Yeah. Also. She said she felt here, um, often happens when it's always scary to know. We left. We just all came to where we, uh.
So, maybe, maybe, yes. Maybe, uh, one of our kids, maybe, has also think, wow, this is a teenager. Maybe there's kids coming in for a play. Well, we shouldn't have a police officer. Uh, I mean, Ed, if you don't call two hundred kids that were in the walls, obviously, the kids started fighting with them. Two of them, but they're also, you know, happy.
Right.
But, you know, you should also know that the lights and others, actually, because they've got, well, the kids run through. Right, and it's very bright, but it's like, when it's too, that's when they're off. They're gonna be out there, it's annoying traffic. And no one's supposed to be in there. It's bright, you like six o'clock.
Yes.
Yeah, it's so dark.
I was the one who did the same thing at my room. And it happened. And I sent a text message, we were texting, I pause, I'm like, I did.
No, they, it's always put down, uh, I don't care, I don't give a steam or.
Yeah.
Or, by then, they try to lose the car. Okay, about the sea wall, I knew about my hours. They weren't there. Right? But it just. They were not, but those were, they're definitely. Oh. They, they, they were free coming from their neighborhood. Me and Steve, uh, we were the night shift worker. Asked her why you come, uh.
Who's crazy thoughts?
Uh, they did, they did. That's right. Uh. Thank you, my, uh, because my daughter's a teenager, I think, very, very.
It's a long, it's a big, and I almost wore it.
I hope we manage this, that it's more.
So, you should go like that. Because for the little clue.
Better than here, I love it. For the, uh, um. You know, I could stay here until five thirty, leave, you know, still there. Uh, my, my older daughter was a teacher in, uh, Fairfield, and she's now in Flood, uh, Flood, and she lives in Milford. I mean, what a difference. Some, some worry about it, um, one, ten minutes.
Uh-huh.
I have, that's. Uh, that was, maybe, we could start with, I think, or just give out of the driveway, uh, and look, get here right back. To somebody complaining. Yeah, somebody complained about the car was inside the vehicle, it was not being used, didn't have the, uh, cage in there. And somebody that didn't live in the neighborhood, I thought, uh, my people told me, we were like, we were.
We were all excited about it.
Let me start, just to, uh.
Does she know what happened or anything, if I should ask?
We were like.
Well, they don't, uh, uh.
Yeah, I'm sure. Was it nice?
They have plenty of stuff there.
It was like, they, they, I think, they had a roof, like, someone threw a rock at the, or a window, uh, uh, porch. Yeah, and it was like, um, bring it back. Okay.
Hi.
Uh, where are you going, where?
I'm looking for the planning commission.
They left.
Oh, good.
I didn't think you were coming.
Yeah.
You bringing a crowd?
Nobody.
Just you?
That's it.
You writing for the Wolves?
They don't like Wolves to me, uh, whatever. Uh.
How you know?
I'm okay.
I haven't seen you in a while.
No, I know. I go back and forth in the winter to Florida for a little while, but I'm here a lot.
Yeah.
Does he? Yeah. She thought when I got older, I could tell the gate board about two things, it doesn't work.
Well, she knows more, maybe.
Is that it?
It's gonna be awful.
Oh. I'm in turn sixty-five. I know, I can take it easy. Cell phones, emails, all that chain. You're, you're on a beach, I don't care, here, here, answer this.
Yeah. Well, it's with these, you're never out of your office, right?
That's the problem. No, that's the problem. Always accessible. I like when I'm going to get beepers, like, all I call for four hours later. I couldn't find a payphone, I didn't have a quarter.
I guess there's no more payphones, uh.
Too many.
Yeah, I think I have a few.
Oh, wow.
If you think it's one of the last ones, uh, if you work, sir.
Yeah, I don't see them.
I don't know, what do you mean?
It could be like.
I don't know, it, it, it might be one of the, uh, five, uh, nine.
Not much. Come on.
You're fine.
Yeah.
I worry about.
I worry about.
We got home from, uh. I'm younger, though, I live in, uh, California. So, she was turned thirty, probably, so we can, so we can not see her this for a long weekend. Of course, we're really, yes, we should stop the bell, that's the sign. Supposed to leave at twelve thirty. They're only ten thirty. Get to the airport.
Yeah.
Get to the airport, uh, three o'clock. The way, I'm like, she's like, freaking, we should just go. Ready to get into safety box? This is for. That's not one. Oh, yeah, we actually got them shut. Okay. There was a light, uh, where you install.
It's a text in person.
And it's like, some texts, it's great. I.
Yes, we, it was on that, yes, for questions. He's done that, literally, he said that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I love it. And it's free.
Um.
It was free, it was like, it's.
John, no, I still learn.
We got a new.
Well, I already got. Are you starting to talk about why?
Like, are you, are you far? No, I wish.
It's the other.
No, I know, I'm sorry. I'm in.
You were saying that.
I, it's the same, I don't hear.
Usually, um, we don't.
Oh, yeah, we, oh, I, of course, we are, uh, yeah. I heard, I heard a story.
Well, but usually, we don't exist that, because you're like, you're like.
I'm just kidding, yeah.
A little bit.
I know, we try to, we are from the old. We're the elections.
That's true, or, um, we, uh, we. Police patrol, uh, police patrol. If you like, uh, they watch.
Yeah. That's it. Got it. Yeah, so. Um, it's, um, it's, um, we're, it's me. You know, it's, um, um.
Recertification cycle, we have an insurance agent come to the town and review our materials. And they would say, you know, the town is more, you know, strict with flood plains and more in compliance with flood plain regulations. So we will be scored favorably. But if we are more lenient, and chances are, we might slip down in our rating if we don't pay close attention to how this would affect the flood plain prone properties and flood prone properties in Stratford. Sorry for the lengthy staff report, but this was, I like, I enjoyed writing this one. As you see.
Thank you, Sismita. All right, do, does anybody have any questions about this? For Sismita. Okay. Yes.
So, so you're saying that this would be more lenient, right? So this would be looked upon unfavorably with?
I wouldn't say it's more lenient, but it's not carefully thought out. I would say, like, there is a way that you can narrow down this. Because when I overlaid all the flood zones, I saw that if the property in Limbaugh Zone are only subject to this regulation, then there will be like a handful, like 10 properties impacted by it.
Okay.
But if you're just saying blanket all Amazon properties, then you're opening it to a can of worms. And you never know which applicant would come in for storage of trucks and trailers. And that kind of defeats the purpose of place making that the town wants to have in commercial industrial corridors and economic development objectives.
And, and the way that, if I could ask another question, and the way that this amendment is, is written, they could put a trailer out there for, for as long as they want, right?
Yes.
And they don't necessarily have to be able to move it on a moment's notice. You know, one of the things that would concern me is, you know, floods, yeah, they're predictable events. But you have to be able to move stuff to, to get out of the way. And that's, that's quite concerning.
Yeah. And one more thing to think about is, it's one thing to approve something as a regulation, but then there's also something called absentee landlords. There could be investors, absentee landlords who could develop these parcels. I mean, nowadays, it's very hard to build in flood plains because of the elevation requirements. And it's become very expensive. And this is, you know, I see this as an easy way to generate revenues, which is not wrong. But at the same time, if you get an absentee landlord, how would you ensure that during a coastal event, it's properly maintained? Or, you know, you, you move the vehicles out of harm's way in timely manner? So if you were to approve it favorably, there are conditions you have to impose. So the text amendment is not as loosely written as it is right now. But if you were to disapprove, then it's up to the zoning commission to secure four votes to pass a proposal.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Sismita, what is our role as a planning commission? Do we have to decide strictly on the basis of our reading of the P O C D? Or can the advice from the state D E P and our consideration of the insurance regulations be determinative of our decision?
So as a planning commission, you're authorized to oversee the general long range planning of the town and ensure that the planning goals and objectives are being met in all these proposals that come on a regular basis every month. So when I'm talking about C R S program and insurance policies, that is one of the chief goals and objectives of our flood plain management planning. To make, to assist property owners to keep up their properties and allow them, you know, you know, help low income property owners, especially who are in these flood zones, be able to obtain these discounts. So they don't have to overspend or, or, you know, making sure that they're not displaced because they're unable to play, pay their insurance premiums or mortgages, assisting in affordable housing. These are some of the goals in the plan. And when you talk about the flood plain administrators comments, ultimately, the state flood plain administrator has greater authority. And if she finds that a property is noncompliant, she can issue cease and desist order anytime. And if Stratford has, is having a handful of properties that are becoming noncompliant in their flood zones, that becomes a bigger problem for the community because now we are noncompliant with the state regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion? Yes?
I move that we recommend against this text amendment on the basis of the D E P recommendation and the implications for flood insurance.
Do you need to say unfavorable? Can you, can you please phrase it as unfavorable?
I think you also have to say whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the P O C D and what objectives and goals.
I'm sorry, you didn't get the last part.
What goals and objectives of the P O C D is it inconsistent with?
I move that we make an unfavorable recommendation on the basis of this being inconsistent with the P O C D because of the D E P regulation, recommendation and the insurance implications.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ed. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on. Next, we have the, another zoning commission referral. Zoning map change and text amendment for 520 Success Avenue property. This is a petition of Commlink Inc. Seeking zoning map change for 520 Success Ave. Property to change the zone from R M one district to Majestic Place District with accompanying zoning text amendment to include new section 29, which allows for the construction of a four story affordable housing development at this subject property. If you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm attorney Stephen Bellis. I represent Commlink Inc. I just wanted to tell the commission that 520 Success Avenue is currently a building. That is a portion of it in Bridgeport and a portion of it in Stratford. It already has apartments in it. And I have handed to the chairwoman a rather lengthy settlement agreement that many of my clients entered into with the town of Stratford and the mayor has signed that settlement agreement. And as part of that settlement agreement, it was agreed that we would submit to the zoning commission an affordable housing application for that property that I'm talking about on 520 Success Avenue. And that it says in the settlement agreement that the affordable units will be in Stratford because you guys need affordable housing units. And as opposed to being in Bridgeport. And secondly, that what, the reason I'm here is that under an affordable housing application, there's a state statute called eight dash thirty G. And that statute says you go to zoning and zoning decides on the affordable housing application. So it got sent to you, which is unusual for an affordable housing application. Because if it were not an affordable housing application, then under eight dash three, since this is a zone change and text amendment that I have to file with the affordable housing application. But if it were not an affordable housing application, you would be used to seeing it and making a referral either favorable or unfavorable to the zoning commission and then they would vote on it. And as Sismita has already said in the last hearing, the determination is whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the plan of development. Unfortunately, that's not the standard for an affordable housing application. So whether you find it's consistent or inconsistent, that's not a reason for the zoning department to either approve it or deny it. So yes, I appreciate that it was referred to you. You can send it back to zoning saying you reviewed it. It's an affordable housing application and take no action. If you want to say that you're favorable or I'm okay with that. But generally speaking, you do see these referrals when it's not an affordable housing application. But when it is, it doesn't really make sense to come here. So I'll answer any questions. I, I do think that the town signed off on the settlement agreement. They obviously want it. I think the location, it's right next to Success Village, right? Which is a big project in town that's multifamily. And as I said, it's literally, I wouldn't call it on the border. The border splits the property. It's kind of weird. You don't see too many of those. So I am before zoning. I already made my presentation. I, I hope they vote favorably. I think they will. But they did refer to you and I didn't want to just not show up. So that's why I'm here. Any questions, I'll be glad to take it. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Sismita, will you please give an overview of this?
Sure.
Town planning perspective?
Yes, and this is another one that I enjoy writing. First of all, I would like to clarify that affordable housing is not exempt from town plan of conservation and development. Affordable housing is one of the key goals and objectives of the P O C D document. The town wants to promote affordable housing and is in favor of promoting housing that is aesthetically designed for low income and very low income households that suits their needs in locations that are, that do not endanger public health, safety and the general environment, the natural environment. So I, I, there is, this is clearly under planning's purview to ensure that the low income and very low income households are not put at risk in locations that are not suitable for them. And in, you know, in environment where our endangered species are impacted or wetlands are impacted and, you know, causing more harm to the community than good. Even eight dash thirty G says the same thing. It says that a community has the right to deny an affordable housing application if it endangers public health, safety and impacts the natural environment. And in this case, this was referred to the planning commission because it's a text amendment. This zoning text will be part of the zoning regulations of town of Stratford for this particular parcel moving forward for generations to come. And so the regulations create the parameters for the development. If the regulations are not strong enough, your development will not be good enough. And if the development is not good enough, then obviously you create problems for the surrounding area and for the community as a whole. For example, if the parking standards aren't good and you approve something just because it's an affordable housing and people are parking everywhere on the streets after this is approved, then, you know, you have created an adverse impact on the community that is unintentional but irrevocable. So it is very important for planning to review this from a planning lens and ensure that the goals and objectives are, you know, consistent with the proposal and the text amendment language. So I would briefly go over my staff report. The applicant is proposing to create a new section entitled Majestic Place District under section 29 of the zoning regulations. This would only apply to the parcel located at 520 Success Avenue. As the applicant has mentioned, this application went before the town's architectural review board in February 2022. At the time, the proposal was only for seven units in that location. Now, the number of units is significantly higher, forty five units. So, you know, clearly, there will be some design implications. And the applicant was suggested to go to the town's architectural review board per the requirements of the town charter for all multifamily developments. And the way commercial developments and multifamily developments are defined in the town code is any development greater than three units or more is considered, any residential development is considered a multifamily according to that fire code. So the applicant chose not to go before the architectural review board. And nevertheless, they are, you know, required to go because that's what the town charter demands. And when you look at it from a planning standpoint, I think it's a good proposal. It is like they're proposing affordable housing and, you know, the intent is good. And it, it also helps Stratford meets our own affordable housing count. Because Stratford currently has six point three four percent of its housing stock as affordable per state statute. But Stratford needs 10% to become an exempt municipality. So when you become an exempt municipality, you have more control on, you know, identifying locations where such housing can be located. Right now, it's in the developer's control as to where, which parcel they pick for affordable housing. And they can, you know, propose anywhere in the town as long as it doesn't impact public health, safety and the general natural environment. We also conducted a housing plan a few years ago before the P O C D document. And at that time, the consultant has come up with a statistic on how many units Stratford needs to become exempt and how many units we need to seek a moratorium from the eight dash thirty G statute. So Stratford roughly needs 400 units more of affordable housing to become, to obtain a moratorium and roughly 800 to 900 units more to seek exempt municipality status. So if you're adding 37 out of the 45 that is proposed as affordable housing units, you probably will be inching very, very minutely towards that goal. But you're still, you know, taking a step forward. And that is good. But the problem is the text amendment language itself. Like I, you know, my staff report has two pages, almost one and a half page full of comments on how the language could be tightened. We want the language to be strong. So we are, you know, like I said, if the text amendment language isn't strong enough, it's hard to, you know, mandate a development in that, you know, area which is good enough for the community and the neighborhood. So I would say, you know, the applicant would have to work with planning department or the zoning commission in this case, because it's going to the zoning commission now, to fine tune the language of the text amendment proposal. So that, you know, it can be, it can be embedded into the town code and of, a good development can be proposed that is, you know, favorable to all. This is therefore, like, you know, one of our land use objectives in the P O C D document is to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness, understandability and meet the needs of changing socioeconomic conditions. The text amendment language as it is written right now does not meet this criteria. It does not, you know, lend itself to be useful or understandable because of the vague language in it. For example, like, the text amendment language calls for prohibition of development activities within 50 feet of freshwater inland wetland and 75 feet from a tidal wetland coastal resource. But it is unclear why an exemption would be needed because there are no wetlands on this property. And why cannot it be eliminated? So things like that, that can make this a better regulation have to be paid attention. It is consistent with the housing goals of the P O C D to develop and implement inclusionary zoning principles that promote affordable housing, to enable more housing choices and options than what exists currently, and to address current and future housing needs and desires, to promote housing design reflective of and sensitive to community design preferences. I'm not sure if we're looking at through that lens of design. But when you look at the standards, you can say that some of the standards can be, you know, changed so that the design can be better. And it is consistent with housing objective to obtain an exemption or moratorium on Connecticut general statutes, eight dash thirty G statute on affordable housing. There is no energy efficiency and sustainability practices promoted in this development. So that it becomes inconsistent with the energy, environment and sustainability initiatives or objectives of the P O C D. I think in conclusion, I can say that after the full review of this application, it appears as though the proposed application is incomplete and generally inconsistent with the land use and environmental objectives identified in the P O C D.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody? Or Sismita?
If I could, just really quick, it's just a basic question. So this majestic, thank you. This is going to be a new zoning district. This is, this is, this is, what is the reason behind that? There was, there was, you know, would it have been easier to, to use an existing zone to, to do this? Why the introduction of a new one?
I can only respond to the chair.
Because, you know, affordable housing developments can override current zoning laws in, in non exempt municipalities. They can create their own zones.
Okay.
And that's why, you know, you know, if you read my staff report, I cited the chapters in Connecticut general statutes like, I think, chapter 126 A and chapter 124 that authorize municipalities to write their own zoning codes to promote affordable housing. Because these housing units will be dense compared to the regular housing developments. And they would need their own zoning text language.
Got you. Thank you. And if I could ask another question. The, the community design preferences or the sensitivity to that, what, what, what is that? Is that just basically the number of units that are being introduced in this?
It's, it's not about the units. It's about the parking spaces count, you know. And, you know, there are some that are off site and they cannot be technically considered as off street parking dedicated for the proposed project. And, you know, there is no minimums or maximums for height of buildings, setbacks, impervious area, lot coverage. These are things that we need in the zoning regulations. You know, typically, we get phone calls on these things.
Okay, thank you.
How about we wait and get all the questions? There might be something else that you can. Go ahead, Joe.
I, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. This proposal is for 56 parking spaces, 18 feet wide. The town regulation is 20 feet wide. So that means effectively, there would be 51 parking spaces. Of those 51 parking spaces, 22 would be supposedly off site. That means there's only 29 onsite. The existing regulation for parking is one and a half per unit. That means that a development of this size would require 67.5 parking spaces. Instead, we have 29 onsite, which means there's an inevitable spillover into the neighborhood. If you drive by the site, it's already pretty crowded. Success Village has a lot of cars. There's commercial development in that, right in that immediate vicinity. So I think there's a clear public safety issue here without, without onsite parking guaranteed for all the residents.
Yes, thank you. Sismita did point that out in number nine in her report as well. Thank you, Joe. Are there any other questions from the commission? Steve?
Yeah, two, two things. Number one is, to answer your question, sir, we have to draft a text amendment according to eight thirty G. And it's only for this property. It's not for any other properties. So that's why we do it. We're required to do it. Okay? So it is a zoning change in the zone for that piece of property only. Secondly, Sismita and this gentleman, it's not your fault, but you're referring to an old draft. When we go to zoning, we make, we've submitted an application, Jay writes a report and we take his comments. And I've already submitted an amendment that you're not, you're not looking at. The parking now is all onsite, not, there's no off site parking. That land was, is part, the land where it was off site had been purchased by Commlink from Success Village. And so that is part of the project now. It's not off site parking. But you wouldn't know that. And that's fine because you looked at something that was old. Likewise, the text amendment has all the bulk standards, height, impervious area, all those things that Sismita referred to after I had Jay's comment. And that's been incorporated in the newer thing. So these things kind of evolve, you know what I mean? When you go to zoning, we listen to their comments and then they give us feedback and then we make changes. And all the comments that you guys seem to be concerned with have already been dealt with at zoning. And you know what? When we go back on the 24th, we may deal, we may change it again, right? For the better. But all the comments that you've mentioned have been incorporated in the newer documents that Jay has. So I just wanted you all to know that. I'm, I'm not faulting you. You're looking at something that isn't, isn't in real time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So you have two options here. First of all, you know, it's the applicant's responsibility to get to us a correct document. And the staff report was posted online. I mean, he wasn't invited to the meeting, but he made it to the meeting. It was his own choice that he came to this meeting. Typically, we don't have applicants come and represent because it's an administrative review. Similarly, if an applicant has revised their text amendment, they have to be submitting that to the planning commission so that we can review and update it document. Or at least alert the staff to have it considered in the review. But because we didn't have that opportunity, you have two options here. One is either you could say that you were looking, per the applicant's discussion today, that you were looking at an old draft of the regulation. But based on that review, you can give your favorable or unfavorable recommendation. Second is a no action, you know, option. I do not suggest you do a no action option because if you did that, then it gets automatically, like, you know, your zoning only needs three votes to do, take this up. And we, we don't know what's in that improved text regulation. Nobody has seen it. So I, I would say if you were to choose unfavorable, then you better state for the record that, you know, the reason is that you have reviewed it, a regulation that was submitted to you. And even though the applicant mentions that there's a more revised text here, you haven't had an opportunity to see it. So you're just commenting on what was given to you and you're giving your opinion on that.
Thank you, Sismita. I agree that we need to look at what is here and what was submitted to us and that there was other things that were discussed here aside from those couple of comments that he did respond to. So to keep those things in mind. Okay, so does someone have a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Based on the documentation presented to us and the lack of development standards, the lack of parking, the lack of an architectural review, I recommend, I think the planning, I move that the planning commission vote unfavorably on this. Make an unfavorable recommendation. I'm sorry, I carboled that, right?
State whether, what objectives it is inconsistent with in the P O C D. And it's in my staff report. You could say that it's inconsistent with the land use objectives of the P O C D.
I move an unfavorable recommendation on the basis of inconsistency with the land use document, land use of the P O C D.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so moving along to the next on our agenda is the Greenway and Complete Streets Committee update. We, do we have, do, update for that from this?
Well, I have some good news that the phase one is going on full speed right now in front of town hall. The implementation work, as you can see, all the trucks being parked and a lot of work going on. Phase two, we are still revising design alternatives, especially near Paradise Green location. To figure out, yes, yes. So that's where we are with both.
Okay, thank you. And then we do have also listed here commissioner trainings.
We, I have sent an email from Land use Clear that I received about an in-person training that's going to happen in April, I think, in April last week. So Alec has met his requirements and in this group, Joe Garrix has met his requirements. But especially the longstanding members, if this is your second year serving, then definitely I encourage you to, you know, fill, you know, finish this certification requirement. So that if you're audited, you're in good standing. You can even take classes on your own at your leisure, like. like, you know, by viewing the pre-recorded ones, make sure you get the certificate, though. So just reminding everyone, please take those trainings and get it out of your way so that you don't have to worry about it later.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven eleven? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
No, please, no.
She's the one who knows.
This is the very person who wants you to be just like, sure, maybe.
Especially, I don't know.
Yes.
Like, it's like now, we're trying to stay in your trade.
My husband's doing.
But, of course, he's going to the town, he's just like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You want this for another client?
Yeah, I'll be good. I'll take a settlement, let's say.
How old are you?
I'm thirty.
Seventy, you're old, very young.
Yeah, just in a local, because I don't know what you're doing.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, we're not getting any good time for next.
All right, all right, we're just having so much fun.
I know.
I was having a good time, I seen the ten guys tonight. So we've been enjoying here.
You know, I'm so happy that you enjoyed the moment.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes it's really hard, you know?
That's what I'm saying, I agree.
Thank you.
It's like, why did I miss you this phone call all the time?
Write something beautiful for him, whatever.
Oh, thank you.
Looking like it.
Fancy bag, oh, wow.
I was thinking about forty-five.
That is gorgeous.
Do you like it?
Yeah.
It's pretty, right?
Thank you.
Glad you liked it.
Glad that meeting was shorter, too.
Yeah. Did you pick up the pile of papers somewhere? I don't need it. I don't need it, I was gonna, yeah.
I'm worried to clean up, I got some little boxes.
Yeah.
No, I have it on.
Thank you.